Hi, welcome to our January School Board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda.
I motion to approve the agendas presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I need to mention that we tabled? Okay, so we went over on our study session, so we're tabled items 2.3, review and discussion of board norms, protocols, and goals, and the review of the agenda, and are just coming into our regular board meeting now at eight o'clock. So, Mr. Larson will lead us and will give the invocation, and Mrs. Schultz will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be here this evening, grateful for all of our blessings. We're grateful for the moisture that we have received upon our land, and ask if we might receive more, please. We're grateful for each member of the board and for their efforts, and we're grateful for our administration and our teachers and support staff. We ask for blessing upon them and their respective responsibilities and challenges. We ask that we'll be able to take care of our business tonight appropriately and skillfully, that we'll have the guidance to do the very best for our children and parents of this district, and do so in the name of Jesus Christ.
Item 3.2, oh, we're not doing that. Do you want to talk about the junior high wrestling team? Mrs. Clark? You want to come up?
We're going to bring them, or, I don't know, your recognition. We're going to bring them and celebrate them next. They were here, they were cute, and they'll be cute next month. But actually, in talking to Coach Wilhelm, their coach, we kind of discussed that it might be super nice next month, they're going to wrestle in a state tournament between now and then, so wouldn't it be fun to recognize them?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3.2, I mean 3.3, election of board officers for the 2022.
I'll make a motion to elect Stacy Anderson as our board president for 2022.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nomination for vice president?
I'll move to nominate Kelly Boyer as our vice president for the school board for the 2022 year.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Did we eliminate clerk last year? Are we still?
We did not.
So we still need a clerk?
I'll move to approve Lamista Schultz as our clerk for the board for the 2022 school year.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, you guys. Let's, item 3.4, set and approve meeting dates, times, locations for the 2022 board meetings. Do you guys want to have them on the same day at the same time? That works?
They work for me.
For everybody?
Yep.
Do we have to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the second Thursday of each month as our regular board meeting, and our postings are at each school site, correct? Or on the website? Oh, I'm so sorry. Pardon me, never mind.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to keep posting at the high school. But, no, that was for the dime, sorry. Item 3.5, statement of official posting locations. Do you want to keep it at the high school? Is that where we've been doing it?
Yeah.
And do you send it out to the other?
Yeah.
I'll move to approve the posting for the location for the board means to be located on Board Docs and the original agenda be posted at the Sholo High School main entrance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 3.6, approval of board norms and protocols. Since we didn't get to work on this, can we push this off? Table it? Were we going to discuss it a little?
Review them a little?
Sure. If you want to. I don't know how late you guys want to be here tonight.
Well, we don't have that many. We only came up with three, right?
Well, board norms and protocols, can you pull that up? Because I don't have my attachment, it's not showing.
Well, I think if, at least if we could let the public know the three things that we had discussed at our last board retreat, you know, regarding fiscal responsibility, and to have effective operations and systems. And our second one was academic achievement, to work on that, and work towards student success, behavioral, mental health, and staff development. Right? And then the third one, I can't really see. It says service, which is one that I'm, oh, thank you Vanessa, that's even better, which was service. And I think I'm excited as a board member to look at providing service for staff, for students, and our community. And so that's something I'm kind of excited about. And under service, we have retention, positive relationships, and community. So, thank you.
They have to be fine tuned, but do you guys have anything to add? Or do you want to have another study session to finalize everything?
What do you guys think? Are you good with them? Are they big, or are they?
I like them.
I do too.
I think, could we vote to approve them, and then also we could fine tune them and vote to modify them later? I don't want this to, them not to ever fruition because it keeps getting put off.
So I'll make a motion to approve the goals that is established and as just said.
Kelly, do you want to look at the protocols since it's all one item?
Oh, do you want to do it all at one time?
Well, I think it's all one item.
I can do that, let's do that. Do we want, can we put, oh, it's good, it's up on the screen, so that's perfect.
You might have Zoom on your TV at home.
Do you have your reading glasses on, Chad? Well, maybe let's just hit the highlights of the bold thing. What do you guys think? Okay, so the first one is communication. These are governing board norms and protocols that we are looking at for having for this upcoming year to kind of keep us in check and keep us in line, and kind of establish some norms for us as a board. And the first one is communication. It states, communication between the staff and board is encouraged as long as it follows board policy. Senior leadership team recognizes that good, timely, open, and constant communications regarding school district issues is extremely important. We will strive to anticipate issues which become important, which may become important, or are sensitive to our school district and district stakeholders. Respect the professional expertise of staff. Acknowledge fellow members and recognize those with dissenting viewpoints. So that's under communication. I'm not going to go through all the things. You think we should?
No, let's just hit the highlights.
We've all had the opportunity to read these.
To read it. And then, I was, and then the next one is following chain of command. The last stop, not the first, will be the board. We agree to follow the chain of command and insist that others do so also. While the board is eager to listen to its constituents, the board will insist that everyone follow the procedure. For staff and community members, each inquiry is to be referred to the person who can properly and expeditionally address the issue. Board requests that the likely required, consider, time, or have political implications are to be directed to the superintendent. All personnel complaints and criticisms received by the board or its individual members will be directed to the superintendent. Then we have meeting protocol. Behavior at all meetings is important. We desire to have a legacy of a well-functioning, effective board. We agree to avoid words and actions that create a negative impression on any individual, the board, or the district. We will be open-minded and willing to listen for understanding to various presenters, speakers. We agree to disagree with the courtesy and respect for all viewpoints. Want to do the next one? Lamista?
Sure, the next one is practice efficient decision-making. The board recognizing, recognizes its fiduciary responsibility to assure financial resources are being distributed transparently and in the best interest of the community in cultivating student success. To be efficient and effective, long, long board meetings will be avoided. The board will strive to run meetings where decision-making, action, and votes are efficient. If a board member believes she or he doesn't have enough information or has questions, or the discussion or dialogue will occur before the meeting occurs, review board reports in detail and make every effort to use internal communication to be prepared for meetings. And finally, the board acts as a body. The board understands its role to ensure Sholo Unified School District is well-managed, not to manage the district. Individual board members do not have authority. Only the board as a whole has authority. We agree that an individual board member will not take unilateral action. The board president will communicate the positions of the board on controversial issues. When board members serve on various school committees, their role shall be defined by the board as a silent observer or active participant. Board members should not speak on behalf of the board without authorization.
How does everybody feel about this?
I like it. I like how it aligns with board policy, with policy on every, on every action item. What do you think, John?
I'm okay to go with this as it is.
About Kelly and Lamista Brant? What do you feel about it?
The issues that we talked about before have been resolved, and I like where it is now.
Yeah, I like this, I like how this one turned out.
Yep.
You guys want to go ahead and move forward with the norms and protocols? And the goals with, knowing that we have to kind of fine tune the goals a little more?
Yeah, I motion to approve, sorry.
I'm sorry, I guess the goals are in a second one.
They're separate.
So we're just on the norms and protocols right now, 3.6.
Then I motion to approve these board norms and protocol.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So item 3.7 is approval of board goals.
I make a motion to approve the board goals as presented.
I'll second with a caveat that we can add more detail later if we want to.
All right, I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 3.8, superintendent report, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, we are moving forward. Just wanted to remind you, one of the highlights that's coming up here real shortly is Saturday. The robotics team is kicking off their season. I heard Mr. Gillespie come into the office today, and he was talking about trips coming up. He's got elementary kids going to the valley, and another group going to White River, and he's got kids going all over the place. So it'll be fun to see what their, their project for the senior team needs to look like. It's fun as they explore ideas and give you some concepts. So I would encourage you to, that Saturday is when they're running their kickoff, if you have a chance to drop in. I believe that's in the Cooper Day.
9:30, I think, right?
And we just started off the, the beginning of the second semester, and things fortunately are going pretty well. Some of the things that we, areas that we had to address, we were worried about drivers and things, and some of those solutions come up with by our transportation department have proven fruitful, and our routes ran really well the last couple days, and through this first week, and we're hoping that they continue.
Do we have enough drivers now?
Right now, we have the areas to the point where we believe Mr. West will be able to get off a bus. So we're, we're moving forward with that, and excited to have that resolved.
And we got the white fleet?
We did get some, we did get most of our white fleet in, and they've been driven. I think they already have 20,000 miles on them.
Were they new?
Just getting, they're brand new, yes. They were, they were new, they're, they're really nice. They have all kinds of features on them, but I think they're going to be, and they're, they're the wider ones, more people would prefer the dual-axle one versus the single-axle one that we, we got early on. So I think that's going to be, going to be a little bit better for transporting those. Transported up to 15 students. And depending on the size of the, obviously. We also have just a few, few other things coming up. The anticipated, just for the board information, we anticipate the budget committee starting here mid-January. We pushed the timelines off a little bit because we're still looking at what that March 1 deadline looks like for the constitutional expenditure limit. And so some of the decision-making will be put off. Or we're doing a capital needs assessment that starts tomorrow on all of our capital assets, including buildings and furniture, so that the board will be presented. There'll be a committee that gets to review that, prioritize, and then they'll submit that to the board for your review and prioritization, so that we can set a five-to-seven-year plan for capital expenditures. There will also be a few other committees. We do need to get a calendar to you for the 2223 school year. We're running, just a little behind on that, but we hope to have it to you in the February board meeting for your approval, so the committee will be reviewing that. Also, we're working on the, there's a committee of individuals who we, we lovingly call the marketing committee. They are experts in things like social media and websites. And right now, we've set some requirements to upgrade and improve our, our delivery in those areas, and they're going to meet here shortly, and Hal is going to walk them through the review of several websites and other features that we have out there that are more advanced than what we have, and hopefully will provide more end-user features that we utilize to communicate and get the word out. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Housley. Item 3.9, call to the audience, Mrs. Kerr and Mr. Adams.
Hello. Good evening, I'm Mrs. Kerr, this is Jason Adams. We are here to just add some consideration to the discussion of extra-duty stipends, 7.1, just so you can have a point of view. Members of the board, upon review of the agenda for this week's board meeting, the stipend discussion and proposed scale caught our attention. In the memo from Mr. Housley, it's proposed that teachers be compensated at 1/7 of the certified base teacher salary, rather than the teacher's current, each individual's teacher's current base salary. This causes an issue in the fact that for any teacher that makes above that base salary, there will be a loss in income. For example, if I were receiving a prep buyout this year, and I again received a prep buyout next year, I would actually have a compensation decrease of over $2,200. This proposal, this proposed scale is unfair due to the fact that a teacher's base salary is representative of their knowledge and experience. The same knowledge and experience is being used on a prep buyout and should be valued and compensated at the same rate. This proposed scale devalues teacher time, knowledge, and experience.
Furthermore, in the memo from Mr. Housley, he states that, in his opinion, or our opinion, and these are his words, "It is our opinion that the chart, as outlined appropriately, captures salary range and percent of the base to remain competitive within the marketplace." In order to verify whether that was a valid opinion, we called just Snowflake High School and Blue Ridge High School district offices to ask them what they compensate, what their rate is at, and it's at the teacher's base salary. They don't do like the lowest salary, they take whatever the teacher's base salary is. So what does it mean to stay competitive? To put it simply, it's to keep offering value to your customers so they feel comfortable in the market. There are many ways to stay competitive. It can be through very efficient operations, extreme value to customers, excellent relationships, or efficient and sound business management. However, a scale that values teacher time, knowledge, and expertise at a lower rate and causes a decrease in a teacher's compensation cannot be considered competitive when it is compared to other schools within the marketplace. We ask the board to take into consideration and change the salary, I mean, for the buyout to the teacher's base salary and not the base salary. That way, all teacher's time is considered and valued the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3.10, future board agenda items?
I have an item. I meant to bring it up in our last meeting, but I somehow overlooked it. But I was, when we were at the conference last month, I really enjoyed one of the breakout sessions that was in relationship to mental health and social emotional wellness for staff. And I know that as board members, we've been just kind of told there's a pocket of people that might not be happy, but I think it might be a little bit bigger than what we think it might be. And so I would like to propose that we have a future agenda item and discuss it as a board, to have a committee to, to kind of just see exactly where we are with staff, how things are going, and maybe have a variety of different staff members involved, and also come up with something to address mental health and social emotional wellness for our staff members. I know we have unprecedented times right now with COVID and everything, and it's just kind of messed everything up and messed, you know, our daily lives up and stuff. Tempe Union High School came up with this policy, and it's actually ASBA policy. And I actually have, you know, what the resolution and everything like that that I would like to share with the board for next month, and have that committee. And also, I was thinking that it might be good to have one of our administrators oversee that committee. So anyway, I'm kind of, maybe we can discuss that as well. Thank you, and I would like it to be an action item, please. Thank you.
I was going to suggest something very similar, so, thank you. We were at the same.
We all went to the same poll. Yeah, we were at the same, same breakout session.
Thank you. Item, sorry, I lost my spot. 4.1, approval of counselor professional growth and refinement system. This is you, Mr. Housley?
No, the information for you is inside your board, board book. Should you have any questions, Mrs. Marsh is here this evening.
And we didn't have this in place before, right? So this is new?
Yeah. Thank you.
You want the memo, or you want the?
Probably either one. Yeah, that one's great, thank you. And what is this?
This is for the counselors, they don't have any evaluation tool in professional growth.
So Mr. Housley, why was this developed? What's kind of behind this?
Currently, there's been a lot of discussion and, and dialogue over the, over a number of years about, counselors often have to, they, they've kind of been lumped into the same evaluation tool as teachers, and they don't perform the same job and function, so it's hard to massage what they do into a teacher evaluation system. But there is, there is precedent and a need for a counselor evaluation system. This provides them guidance with that. There's two others that still are under development that we have to work with, and that's the school psychologist and a, and a speech-language psychologist. Those two are, are also independent evaluations. But Mrs. Marsh worked with those in, in this department to evaluate different systems that were out there. They, they looked at different things. Mrs. Cota actually sits on, I believe, the state board for counselors, and was able to provide a lot of, a lot of feedback and direction as far as that's concerned. So in there, Mrs. Marsh outlines in her memo how the process was, but if there's other questions specifically about the process or about that evaluation tool, they tried to model it and make it look like the teacher one is in format. So I think that that's what's represented there, so.
Thank you.
And I had a few questions, and they were answered, so thank you. A motion to approve the counselor professional growth and refinement system as presented.
I'll second.
Go ahead, John. 3 seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.1, approval of new hires, renewals, and transfers, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, for your, your consideration, there are a number inside the attachments. Dave Clark, relief bus driver. Lynn Sepola, mentored by Candace Labute, that's at the junior high, doing some practicum stuff. It's under the student teaching heading, but they're doing student practicum hours. And Rihanna Anderson, mentored by Joel Rotten. Also transfers Matthew Jones from grounds to Tech 1, excuse me, grounds Tech 1 to maintenance Tech 2, and that's effective on 1/20. For your consideration this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring, as presented.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.2, approval of stipends, volunteers, and event workers, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, for your consideration this evening, as you found in your board book, Richard Celine, drama director. And attached there is Mr. Marchant's memo about the process for that. Spiritline Winter Season, head coach Diane Moya. Assistants Rachel Walker, Anna Kahon, Jay Moya, and Lindsay McGregor. And then event workers, Carlo Hernandez, Grace Lynn Kerr, and Laura Shilton. For your consideration.
I'll make motion to approve the stipends as presented. Including event workers as well.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.3, approval of contract work assignment revisions, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, we're asking for a transfer of Sean Roberts at Whipple Ranch Food Service. Transfer from a four-hour day, four days a week, to six hours, four days a week, to help with, with that head department at Whipple Ranch, for your consideration.
I'll make motion to approve the contract work assignment revision, as presented.
I'll second.
A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.4, approval extension of Mr. Housley's superintendent contract. This is for a one-year extension to the 23 school year, right?
2023.
2223 school year.
I'll motion we approve a one-year contract for the superintendent.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 7.1, discussion of extra-duty stipends. Mr. Marchant, do you want to talk about it at all, or?
Madam President, this is just for your discussion, so.
Okay, just for our discussion?
Mr. Marchant presented this format, and so this is just a discussion item this evening for the board to discuss.
Can I ask Mr. Marchant, because you've talked to us so many times? Is this the same initial one you gave us?
Yeah, that was a mock example of what.
So this isn't the one you want to use?
Not necessarily, I think you could use.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Housley. On the spreadsheet they gave us under prep junior high and prep high school, there's an M in here, but on the, is that just a typo, or?
No, that was the other category that was on there. There was an M at 1/6. One thing about 1/6 or 1/7 prep buyouts is that, you know, technically, the junior high has eight periods, but not all eight periods are 60 minutes, right? At the high school, they have six, there's been times that they've been 90-minute periods, and they've had, not six, they've been at seven periods. And so just as a consideration to what it would look like if you went to a singular set amount for all prep periods, you would be lucky, you know, that's what it, that's what it might look like. Remember, this is just for discussion. It was a basis for discussion. Earlier on, there was a lot of work put into this. And so this is just giving you some, some flavor, so that you can kind of massage it and land where you are. The bottom line is, we need one thing, and that is a standardized ways to assess compensation for second, for extra-duty and prep R. So that's just what we're considering here, and trying to formalize it. If it's this, great, if it's not, it's okay. We just need to formalize it so that we, we get there. And, you know, the consideration that was given tonight and called the public, that's certainly consideration you should consider. This is just a way to keep us in, and to try to build a consistency.
And so I have another question. So we have under here, under positions, STUCO, is that for just the high school, or is that would be the student council for high school and junior high?
My intent would be if it's a STUCO advisor, that it'd be a STUCO advisor, whether it's junior high or high school.
Okay.
Now, we might have to evaluate to see if, I believe the STUCO at the junior high does things all year long, and they do activities and things. Is it to the same extent that Mr. Whipple puts in at the high school? I don't, I don't know that it is with prom and all the other things that they do, but maybe.
Okay.
I like there being some sort of system, having different levels. As it's being refined, I think would be helpful if there was some sort of information on what each of the levels entail, you know? So how much time or however you want to be looking at it, so that when a teacher is looking at, well, why am I getting what I'm getting? They can look and say, oh, because it's at this level and this level is with the assumption that this is how much time I'm spending on it. And then if that changes, then they can have some sort of basis for saying, I think I should be moved up a level and deserve more and would actually have some sort of, something to be pointing to. I'm not saying that has to happen this first time, but I think that's the direction it should be going, that it be very clear and transparent as to why people are being compensated what they are and that there's a reason. I brought it up several times that, I don't know if they've ever been at this meeting, but I, with the prep hour stipends, I kind of agree with what was spoken about in the holiday audience. I understand the reasons why we, why we might want to move to some sort of standard that this is just what everyone gets. But at the same time, you know, if they have different reasons that they, their level of pay is higher, that doesn't go away for that seventh hour that they're teaching. So, and I think if we just make it where no matter, you know, what your normal level is, you get this X amount of dollars. I think it'll end up, people will be, the more experienced teachers who get paid more will be less likely to want to do it because they won't be making as much money doing it. And then, but those are the teachers that probably can handle having an extra class. The new teachers who maybe want the money more also maybe don't, don't have, they don't have as much background to be building on to easily do a whole other class. So I'd be worried as to what the student experience would end up being if they, if you're having the experienced teachers less willing to do the prep hours, which I think would be understandable. If I was them, I would be less willing to want to be doing it if I'm now getting paid the same as a new teacher for that extra work. So I don't know. I'm, I think we'd need to talk about it more before I'd be willing to go into doing something like that. And if we are going to be saying where it's going to be a flat fee, maybe it can be a higher flat fee that isn't taking so much away from the experienced teachers. Those are some of my thoughts, obviously.
Just a point of clarification, this is only a discussion item tonight, and it is so that the board can flush these things out.
Right, and that's why I'm discussing it. That's why I'm letting you know my feelings.
You could just flush it out. It just doesn't even capture all this. We don't have all the stipends recognized here. There are grant stipends and other things that are captured. So this is a basis for conversation. I appreciate your discussion.
Since most of these are extracurricular, you know, line items, can we just not just deal away with level seven or level, yeah, level L, I'm sorry, L? And just continue to pay them as we typically have at their daily rate of pay and 1/7 of a stipend? Would that be something we could consider?
You can capture it however you want. Just having it there as a, as a, as a category provides you a place to look. You can put it anywhere. We can capture it however you want.
Okay, and just continue on as we're doing right now?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's an option.
Because right now, we're just currently paying them like 1/7, right?
Well, it depends.
Or 1/5th or whatever. Okay.
And if, and if that could fluctuate. So if, if the junior high next year decide to go to seven or six periods, then it would be different. If the high school went to six periods or seven periods, it would, it would change, and that has been very difficult over the years. But yeah, it would fluctuate.
Okay.
Have anything, Brad?
Yeah, I guess, so Mr. Marchant and Mr. Housley, what specifically do you need from us so that, as far as direction goes? Like what, what do we, I know we're supposed to have a discussion, but like, what do you need from us at this point so that we can give you clear direction so that your committee meeting and that can be as effective as possible so that when you bring us something back? Are you looking that we're wanting to categorize these based off of like student population, student achievement, hours spent outside the classroom? Like, is that all of that or what, like, what we want? Because I'd be happy to kind of give my ideas of what I have as long as I know what you guys want from us so that I can give that clear direction to the staff.
There's a couple, couple of things that are, would be helpful for us, and that's just identifying, you know, I appreciate the thoughts that are out there, but if, if you say, I want you to go out and value this based on the amount of work done. But let's assume that you hire a football coach. We did last year, right? We hire a football coach. That football coach works from August to October, November, makes it state champion, wins a state championship, and that's all they do. That football coach leaves and the next one comes in, but they work every day. They have football practice or they're in the weight room or they're doing some activity and now they're working a whole lot. Do you, do you change that because now they're working more, because they're giving more? I would, I would hope that you would give us some guidance on where, where the value of that position falls and we can remain. For instance, we're not considering athletics in this because the athletic department is going to make a recommendation to utilize, using the coaches, and they have a model for that. But that was just an example. But if you have, the hard thing about doing performance type systems is you have to apply the performance piece across, it's hard to have one factor of performance, but not apply a performance to everything. And then if you did that, you'd have to establish for, where the starting points would be, and then what the criteria for that performance base was. So in this scale, what we're, what I was hoping by, just as this being a starting point, is this is, Mr. Marchant did meet with a lot of his staff, those that are reflected here. And they talked about how much, what does this equate to and what does this equate to? And so this is a good basis to start our discussion. So if you feel like it captures at least a starting point, if you feel like the value should change or they, they should be based off of something else, that would be good guidance. But if this format is good, if you'd like to just pull out the, the the prep hour stipend and have it reflect differently, then, then give us that. And then if this chart works for you, then we can start to then associate those, those extra duty pays with the chart and then tell you where that is. And if, as I looked at some of them, where it fell on the chart, you might be a little bit higher, a little bit lower, where it would actually fall, where its current value is, if you just put it into the chart. You might have something that's a D that would be right now $1,200, but it would be $1,143 when we put it in the chart. So you guys would just have to validate that once we do that. But if you like this kind of a system, then you should look at this. If you want to change the percentages or how it's factored, right, we, we will take that decision and bring you back some things. But really want to, I know we spent a lot of time talking about it and there was a lot of, a lot of different opinions. And I just wanted to get this in front of us now so we can dive in and get all kinds of opinions, feedback, if you wanted to explore it next month and get more feedback than however.
I appreciate it. Honestly, I think this is great. And I like the, I like the approach that you've taken, that you've delineated into the three different ones. So I think that there are, you know, they, those three can be broken up in that. I would, I would recommend honestly that we go into a four where we have athletic coaching stipends, extra duty, prep hours, and then hard-to-fill positions. So I think that they're a little bit different than extra duty. And then, that's just my recommendation. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. But when, when we look at that, I think that that discussion for prep hour stipends would be a little bit more comprehensive is into, you know, what's happening, what's going on with, with the, the time that's being dealt with for those issues. And then I think with the extra duty, I think we could look at that and kind of have a basic criteria on it. And though the things that pop out to me first things with extra duty that are different from prep hours is, you know, how many kids are being affected by this? You know, if you're dealing with, with, like, we just hired Mr. Celine as our drama director of the district-wide performance director. And, you know, you look at that, I think that that's definitely something that says, okay, we have a number of students, the duration of time that that person's going to be, whether it's months that this production's going to be going on or the number of hours. And then I think that a third part of that would also be like, I don't know how you capture this specifically, but like community impact, where, you know, we might have an IGA with another government entity within the district where they might be grant funded or something, and that might play into the role. It might be, you know, what, what kind of value does this bring to the community? I know when we put on productions, our community very much values the, the performing arts and stuff like that. And so I think those are three items that you could kind of use to base off of that. And there might be other ones where you're, you're looking at. But I think that the first and foremost in my mind would be the number of students involved, the amount of time involved in doing it, the, you know, the duration of that and how, how much, how we can quantify that. I think those are, at least for me, what I would say specifically when you're talking about the extra duty ones, so.
There's a lot of extra materials that Mr. Marchant sent us. If maybe he can resend them to you, showing all the weights and how we got there and all the background, but I like the formula. And just knowing that it's going to might change every year.
I did like what you just outlined there. You outlined a litmus for decision-making of where they're, where they're at. We all know, I coached high school softball for 16 years. I knew the $2,500 I got to be a head coach wasn't the value of what I was putting in. But I, it was, it was something. So I know it's not an hour for hour, minute for minute value, but we have to place a value on it.
Yeah.
And, and I like that you had a litmus to decide what that looked like. So maybe part of what the board could provide is, is generating that litmus. So the rubric, so to speak, and then we can say, you know, we, we believe that within our rubric that this one fits here. And, and maybe it falls the way that it is. You know, you have to kind of put that in there, but I like that you, if you establish a rubric for us.
And like I said, I don't have all of them in front of me, but I think, you know, you have, if you, if you did a fourth line item and said that that was going to be for our, you know, for the prep hour stipends, I would also say like department, being a department head would probably fall under that because that's more of a, it seems like those two would correlate with each other, you know, your, your prep buyout and also being a department head would fall at least in that same category as far as, you know, dealing with academics and dealing with the, the teaching aspect of and developing curriculum and all that. And then I think that, I know that this isn't a comprehensive list, but I think is everything that we've kind of talked about mine would really be those three, three items that I already said, that you could at least do a launching point to say, yeah, how many kids, how much time, and, you know, is there a community impact to this? And, and if there's any other partnerships we have. And one thing I have, what's a link crew? What is that?
Onboarding of new students to the high school.
Link crew is specifically at the high school. It, it, basically, lack of better terms, it's a welcoming committee for freshmen. Make them feel comfortable and Mr. Johnson runs that, and they have different activities that help freshmen to feel welcome.
That's awesome.
Anything you want to add, John? You guys feel like that captures everything you want to look at further?
I actually, I just want to pay the stipends like we currently do, which I believe is, Vanessa, is that correct? Like we pay 1/7 of their base salary for their prep buyout?
1/7 of their set salary.
The salary.
So when they come in and their salary says 1/7, I think we should align the junior high and the high school to both be 1/7. The difference in, like he said, junior high meets for DMS, but it's not a full class period. I think when we calculated it out, it was a difference of four minutes. So I would probably recommend, and I think that's why the 1/6 is removed off of here, that any prep hour stipend would be valued at 1/7.
And 32, 653, is that the average teacher salary in the district? Where did that number come from?
That's the base salary.
That's our base. Okay.
And that's why almost, pretty much everyone would, would experience a decrease in how much they're being compensated, which is, I just.
I know. Me too.
The other, just a factor to maybe consider, because I, the, everything that you said, they're great considerations. I do think that if you say 1/7, whether it's of the base or 1/7 of the teacher's set salary, whatever it is, it should be 1/7 for every period. I don't, I don't think we should fluctuate the 1/5th or 1/6th. It should just be whatever that you assign. It brings some consistency. But also, as you, as you look at this, if, if it were to sit inside this chart like this, every time you change the base, which, in all fairness, we haven't changed the base a whole lot in the last number of years. I think it's gone from, in the last six years, it's gone from $30,000, just over, over $30,000 to where it is now. But every time that changed, so would all the, all the stipends inside the chart. So that, so if you made a change, let's say we had an opportunity to move the base to $36,000, you, everything would be, would change in importance to that. A good thing, but that doesn't mean the prep hour stipends either. I just wanted to.
I have a question, and honestly, this is, is a question, and it's not, I know I'm about to speak heresy here in the world of, of school finance and stuff like that. And please don't flood my messages with text right now because I'm not advocating. I'm really just asking for it. Is there a way that we could put in this, like a, some type of compensation for our, you know, for our advisors who win a state championship or a regional championship or something like that? Like, is that possible under state statute? Is it something that you've considered, like you, this is your base salary? And then I know we'd have to budget for it, right? And then if we didn't, if they didn't win, then we would have to reallocate that money or something like that. But it seems like, you know, we, we've been very successful in, in some of the ones that are listed. And I know there's others ones that we've been very successful in that I'm, I'm not looking at. But, you know, with our robotics team, they've done a phenomenal job. And it's like, I know that we can't put that, I don't know that we could put that in as our criteria. But if they win a state championship, there's got to be, is there a possibility of that or?
Yeah, I mean, I was just, I was just joking around and we do pay like, in the athletic side, we pay for, after the season. So if they go into postseason, for every week, they get a little bit more. And I said, well, let's just remove that. And if you win a state title, that's real motivation. We'll give you 500 bucks. And they were, they were all excited about it, right? And state champions are hard to come by. You could hypothetically do something like that. I, I think you'd have, there's some, it's not as simple as that because you have to flush some things out, right? There's, there's, I, I might be speaking out of turn, but I think there's four state championships for chair. And inside of each state championship, there might be four competitions that all have state. So you have to figure out what that is. Robotics, I don't know how many championships they can qualify to go to and participate. So.
Yeah.
What would that, what would that, like, those are just considerations, but yeah, you could do it.
Vanessa, don't we currently have that? And do you remember what that amount is for those who go past regular season?
With the new athletic scale that was approved, no, that was removed for the postseason.
And I would like to see something added in this for them.
Are you guys talking just athletics or you're talking?
Anything.
I think in all of it, yeah. I would think we would hold our robotics, Accadac, all of them. Like, I know the band and choir go to regionals and they go to, you know, and maybe that's built into the schedule already, but.
Mr. Keshner is leading the charge with the athletic side, so I can't speak directly to it. But I, I believe that they were, as they developed it, they were okay with removing that because the, the way they reflect the scale out and how they now, they have a budgeted amount. And if they're going to have X number of coaches, they can disperse that amongst the coaches, the way that, I think they found value in that. So that might be some of the reasoning why they have that removed.
Okay.
Anything else?
No. I still just think L should be removed and we should just pay the prep stipend, the buyouts according to their salary.
Yeah, I would agree. And I liked in the memo, I'm looking forward to hearing the subcommittee talking about hard-to-fill positions and how we're going to address that as a district-wide.
How are we doing on subs right now?
On substitutes?
Yeah. Has it been better or is it every day you're short? Everyone's combining?
It's still hard.
Okay. Item 8.1 through 8.8 consent agenda on Mrs. B. Kraft.
So we have for your review and approval, 8.1, the ratification of the expense vouchers. 8.2, ratification of all the payroll vouchers. 8.3, Approval of All Overnight and Out-of-State Travel. 8.4, Approval of the resignations, retirements and terminations. Eight point four, approval of the resignations, retirements, and terminations. Eight point five, approval of substitutes. Eight point six, approval of tax credit and the activity account balances. And eight point seven, approval of the governing board minutes for the December ninth, December tenth, and December fourteenth board meetings. Eight point eight, we have the donations. Mr. Clark, if you want to.
Does anybody else want to read them? I feel like.
I'll read those.
John, you've been quiet tonight. You want to read those, buddy?
I'm always quiet. I'm all right. You can read them.
Okay, I'll read them. Standard Electric donated electric wire for a welling receptor for the robotics team valued at seven hundred ninety dollars and ninety-one cents. Dennis and Judy Cotterman donated fifty dollars to the Sholo High School Girls Basketball Team, which they, uh, last week took first place at the tournament they went to. So great job, Coach Brogan and Coach Moore for that. Uh, the Community Fast donated twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to Linden Elementary, and the Community Fast donated four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to the junior high. I'd like to thank Mrs. Clark for being on that board and helping do that whole, uh, Community Fast. We raised a record number this year. I don't know how much did we raise, Mrs. Clark? Sixty thousand, sixty-seven thousand dollars in a week, I mean, roughly a week's worth of time. So it's indicative of the type of people we have in our community, so we appreciate all of the, the donations for that. So thank you, and thank you, Ms. Clark, for serving on that board. And with that, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Awesome. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just wanted to say something that I was really sorry to see a couple of our, well, three of our people leaving the district. And I was very saddened by Mrs. Hall, and I just wanted her to thank you for everything you've done. You're a great leader, and hopefully you'll come back in some other capacity.
Motion to adjourn. Yeah. Have a, have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Leading adjourned. Thanks, guys.